Meeting to order for Monday, June 5th, 2017. Let the record show that Commissioner Steiner and Commissioner Jennings are not present. We'll move to the order of business. And are there any changes to the order of business? Also, Mr. Kessel will not be joining us tonight. So, Ms. Carlson, you'll be handling Mr. Kessel's part. So, any changes to the order of business?
No, there is no changes.
Okay. No changes to the order of business. I'd like to get a motion to approve the order.
I'll move. Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Order of business is approved. Consent agenda, is there anything on the consent agenda that commissioners would like to discuss or have questions for staff?
I would make motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
In a second. Any further questions, comments? Okay. Do a roll call vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Consent agenda is approved. We have three timetable issues tonight, but we'll move on to the non-time table. And the first one up is the elder care contract. Ms. Carlson?
Thank you, commissioners. The elder care contract is a two-year contract that outlines the operational commitments by elder care to provide nutritional services for the elderly and transportation services through public transit. In 2017, the commitment was $135,000 plus $55,000 for the public. And then in 2018, it would be committed to be $150,000 for the elder and then $55,000 again for the transit. And with that contract, the staff is recommending that we approve as the contract as is.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson from commissioners? Do we need to hear from the elder care people or?
She says no.
Nope. Okay. All right. I'd look for a motion to approve or deny the elder care contract.
I'd move to approve the elder care contract as read.
You have a motion to approve.
Second.
In a second. Any further discussion or hearing none will vote. Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Moving on, we have a beer and wine.
Okay, thank you. The beer and wine is Divya Nails and Spa has applied for a beer and wine on-sale liquor license. The background check has been completed, fees paid, paperwork appears in order, and that staff recommends an approval of that license.
Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on the beer and wine on-sale liquor license for Divya?
I'd make motion to approve the beer and wine on-sale liquor license.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
In a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next up, we have the RFP for pension and investments.
Thank you again. This RFP is, we haven't had one out for the city of Dickinson for 10-plus some years. And so, our investments pertaining to retirement funds, future funds, has been housed with financial services, like I said, for about 10-plus years. And the managing boards of the pensions and investments have received some reports that show some concerns on hitting the benchmarks. And so, with that, when the performance is lower than anticipated, the city must argument these investments with cash. So, we have a vested interest in achieving a high performance and without exposing principal balances and using our cash investments, and that causes risk. So, with that, we are putting out an RFP to also, to, for all of our investment services, including our pensions, and to see the opportunity that needs to be out there now that we have some established services even in the city of Dickinson and stuff. So, we want to keep it local if we can, but we are going to set out the RFP, and it'll be about a three-week, four-week period that the RFP would be out. So, with that, the staff is recommending approval of the RFP that was presented to you.
Any questions for Mrs. Carlson from commissioners? Any comments?
You and I sat in on these as well, and I just, for the public, this was not brought up by either you or I. It was the other board members, which are made up of employees of the-
Exactly.
-city, the police, and fire, et cetera. And so, after more than a decade of using the financial services, the one institution, they decided amongst themselves that they would like to have it put out for RFP. And doesn't mean that we won't end up with the same institution when all is said and done. So, we'll see where the RFPs come from and make a decision based on that.
I agree. Any other questions for Mrs. Carlson, comments? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion to either approve or deny the RFP for the Pension and Investments Fund.
I'd make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
In a second. We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next up, we will have the Museum Center and Museum Director Furman. Welcome.
My, jeez, my first time here since I got here, so bear with me if I don't go according to form or something. What we have here are three proposals for three maintenance issues from the Museum Center. The first is Museum Center roof replacement and Prairie Outpost Park roof repairs, following water infiltration into the kitchen area of the Dinosaur Museum. Due to ice dams, the city building official performed a full roof inspection, that is, both the dinosaur and the Yoka Museum roofs were inspected post-snowmelt. It was reported that the roof covering was in a replacement state with areas of no protection, poor flashing installations, and missing exterior covering on a parapet wall. These findings leading to a recommendation for a complete replacement of the roof covering. At this time, it was also noted that Veterans Chapel and Ridgeway Church in Prairie Outpost Park needed minor roof repairs. And you'll see on the slide that's up right now, the condition of the roof from the building inspector's inspection post-snowmelt. Where am I, Amy? Well, I could paint a word picture for you, I suppose. I don't know if I'm doing something wrong.
There you go.
There we go. Thank you. So, what we have is a consideration to approve a bid for replacement of the roof covering. We had bids open on April 11th. We had two responsible bidders, and we're recommending Perry Roofing and Contracting, the low bidder at $61,377. That covers both the Yoka Museum and the Dinosaur Museum roof covering replacement, as well as the repairs to the two buildings in Prairie Outpost Park.
Mrs. Carlson, we designated a fund?
Yes, this is already funded through the museum maintenance-
Okay.
...which comes out of the hospitality tax.
Okay.
There is an actual maintenance funded reserve there that we will be using for all these repairs.
Do you know what the balance is in that?
$180,000.
Okay.
Okay. Well, we'll tackle that while we're on it right now because we have a couple of items, and I think we'll need separate motions for each. So, I would look, if there are no more questions for Mr. Furman, I would look for a motion to either approve or deny the Perry Roofing contract bid.
I'll make motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion or questions for Mr. Furman?
Ms. Kreip, have you gotten an update on the storm headed this way?
No, I have not.
Okay. Then I guess we'll just have to replace it.
All right. We have a motion to approve in a second. If there are further comments or questions, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries to replace the roof, or repair the roof, I should say.
Thank you.
So, we'll move on.
The next item is at the installation of repurposed exterior lights at the Museum Center entrance. At the suggestion of the city planner and with the agreement of the director of Public Works, the Museum Center has been offered the light standards for, which are recently removed from the downtown park, to be repurposed through the additional exterior illumination along the center's main walkway. You'll see pictures of the part, of the lights right here as they sit at Public Works. Unfortunately, I don't have any pictures of them in their old installed state to show, but they are. Some ornamental fixtures would increase our lighting along the main walkway, which is not what it could really be. A bid was received from Electric Sales and Service Incorporated on April 13th to include installation of concrete light bases, all associated wiring and boring, trenching and anchor bolts, replacing broken and cracked globes, charge change fixtures to LED, and replace any missing globe or trim parts. Public Works staff to load, transport, and set poles in place. Finished painting to be completed by Museum Center maintenance staff. Next. This shows the approximate location of where these four light standards would go. Apologize for the crudity of this. As you can see, it's not to scale or design, but gives you at least an impression of where they would be going. So, we would recommend the approval of the bid from Electric Sales and Service.
Mrs. Carlson, this will be out of the same.
Correct. This is the same funding.
Any other questions for Mr. Furman or?
What was the bid amount on this?
Twenty-five, uh, twenty-five, $785, twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. We look for a motion to either approve or deny the Electric Sales and Service bid.
I'll make motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. And the last is, aye, yes, last, is the installation of automatic door at the main entrance of the museum.
Yes, sir. To take advantage of the amenities of the recently acquired Dinosaur Museum, that is, the formal lobby, admissions desk, gift shop, et cetera, the Museum Center is conforming operations and exhibits to be served by a single entrance via the Dinosaur Museum's front doors. These doors had never been equipped with an automatic opener, which would be desirable for many museum visitors. A bid for an automatic door was suggested and received from Fargo Glass and Paint Company on April 4th in the amount of $6,688. Museum staff recommends approval of this bid.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Furman?
This will come out of the same fund, and that'll leave us about half of the?
Yes. It leaves us about 100, about 100,000 or so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's about 95 for this.
Right in there.
Is there any other repairs that we foresee coming?
There are some minor repairs by comparison to several buildings in Prairie Outpost Park, citing on the Train Depot, new doors on the church, some trim on a couple of the buildings, front porch repairs on the Heath Steinberg Farmhouse. None of those I anticipate being big-ticket items.
And also, I'd like to mention too, that through the dinosaur museum side of where the exhibits are, they've been working on the lights that are over the exhibits. A lot of the ballastings and things have not been working and stuff, so lights have been burning out fast. That has been going through the regular budget of the museum and not touching that maintenance once, so we've been working on that portion of it through the actual budget that was approved.
And this is a fund that over time will keep replenishing itself as well?
Yes. We haven't used it for a few years because of, we've not, you know, officially acquired the Dinosaur Museum, but now that we have, we're trying to bring it into a new rebirth, you might say.
Right.
Like Mr. Forum said, that is, we're making the dinosaur side our main entrance now. We're against the gift shop and stuff, so we're re-tracking how we want to bring our customers in and things, so that's what we're working on.
We actually started that part of the operation just this last weekend, which incidentally, we also went back to seven-day-a-week operation for the summertime.
Great.
It's working pretty smoothly, actually.
Good. Good to hear that.
Good to hear, yeah.
Good to hear that. Okay, I'd look for a motion to accept the bid or deny the bid for the installation of automatic doors at the main entrance.
I'd make a motion to approve the automatic door bid.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Really appreciate it.
Next up, we have the TR Library and Construction of the Elkhorn Cabin Resolution. And you'll be handling this, Mrs. Carlson?
Yes, I have the resolution in front of us. The TR, and I'm going to be bringing any questions or so through Ms. Kreip there because the fact is, I've just got in front of the resolution, but I did read it. And we do have the remaining of 2.7 million because we have already supported the 300,000 for operations. And with that, the resolution is stating that we were going to change our standards according to what the state had approved through the legislation. So, the remaining 2.7 funding of the original 3 million to provide the local match required of the state fund is provided in three payments of 17, 18, and 19. And in the resolution, that states that 17 would be 700,000, 18 would be 1 million, 19 would be another million on that. And then, it's also funding of an extra 350,000, which is provided in the form of a dollar-for-dollar match on that dedicated to the construction of the Elkhorn Ranch cabin replica. The city would provide the TR Foundation 50,000 in 2017 to match the already raised funds for the cabin, and then one additional disbursement for any further fundraising. So, it's based on fundraising. And with that, staff is recommending the resolution be approved.
Any questions for Mrs. Carlson or Ms. Kreip on the resolution?
You've had a chance to speak with the foundation, run all this past them as well, and?
I believe that Mr. Kessel did, and I was CC'd on a few emails where they were given the general outline of what the plan was. They seemed a middle.
I was part of the discussions also, so. I think this is a good kickstart.
I do, too. It'd be nice to see the cabin be completed and?
Yes. And they do have parameters set upon them by the state that they are going to be breaking and moving some dirt around here pretty soon. So, I think this is a good resolution for the city and for the library, so.
I do, too. I would make a motion to approve this resolution.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
In a second. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Resolution passes. Mrs. Carlson, you have a few reports?
Yes. You've all been handed, thank you, commissioners, that you've all been handed the North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund 2016 Annual Report. This report was to be by Administrator Kessel, and what I'd like to say is that there was a decrease in their, in their financial report, but what I'd like to do is mention to you that if you'd like to take the report, review it, and then if you have any other questions or anything, that maybe we bring them back to the next committee meeting, if that's, if that's appropriate.
That sounds fair to me. I agree.
Are there, are there any questions or concerns about the report? I think it's about a $3,000 drop is what I looked at.
Yeah.
It wasn't significant.
Okay, and the other report is that we did get a nice thank you note that, from the Manning, and I would read it here as soon as I can possibly get it up here. Says, "The Manning Community Club would like to thank you for the grant money to help buy the trees we'll need for our cemetery. They are planted and look great. The grant money was very much appreciated. Thank you from the Manning Community Club and members."
And this is part of our Southwest grant?
Yes.
And I know a lot of the communities are very appreciative of what we give back to their communities, be it in something of this nature, or equipment for their fire or EMT services, so.
All made possible through the sales.
Yes, all made possible.
Yep.
That's the end of my report.
All right. Well, thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Next, we'll move on. We have about 10 minutes to our first timetable. We'll move on to the Fire Department, 133rd Annual Firefighters Association Conference. Fire Chief Seabock.
Good evening, President Decker, commissioners. I don't have a presentation for you. This will be just a quick verbal report. As you stated, President Decker, the first, second, and third of June, the Dickinson Fire Department and the city of Dickinson was the host for the 133rd Annual North Dakota Firefighters Association State Convention. We believe we had a very successful convention. Our keynote speaker on Friday was Mr. Gordon Graham, internationally recognized professional in risk management. Our keynote speaker on Saturday was Mr. Kevin Quinn, the chairman of the National Volunteer Fire Council. Both excellent speakers. We were also blessed with, for lack of saying it better, welcoming addresses from Police Chief Dustin Dossinger, Mayor Decker, and Senator Heidi Heitkamp, which was a very nice, very nice addition. We had 329 registered attendees representing 72 different fire departments from across the state. It was a very successful convention, and the city of Dickinson and all of the Dickinson merchants and establishments did a great job of taking care of these people. Just want to say thank you to all of them that supported this convention.
It looked, it looked like a really good turnout, I mean.
Thank you, it was.
So.
Thank you.
It was pretty impressive. You forgot to mention the bagpipes.
Ah.
That was, that was, that was impressive.
You have to experience them.
Yes.
It was the Rapid City Pipe and Drum Corps, Professional Firefighters Association Bagpipe Group. The first time they had ever played in North Dakota.
Wow.
And they were extremely good, weren't they?
Yes, they were very good.
Very powerful. Thank you.
We have nothing from police tonight, so we'll move on to engineering. Ms. Marshak, you'll be handling engineering tonight?
That's correct. President Decker, commissioners, the item that we have before you is an amendment to the shared use path. Excuse me. That would be Amendment Number Two of Task Order M7 with KLJ. This covers additional work that we requested for some acquisition of additional right-of-way and title work. The cost for this amendment is $15,100, which would bring the total project cost for this task order to $263,870. If you could advance the next slide, just for reference, this yellow piece on the map shows where our trail is going to go along 21st and 10th Avenue. So, from 20, Highway 22 on 21st, across over to 10th Avenue, and down 10th Avenue to 14th. So, in the northeast corner, there's a park area. We've talked about previously, some of that work was additional in Task, in Amendment One. What we're doing now is just west of that, there's some property owners that are coming in to do some replating, and so, they've been approached about giving us some additional right-of-way. Right now, the pathway would be in a low area, and this would help us get the path on top of a higher elevation. So, the next slide kind of shows some of that.
That whole corner's pretty wet.
Yeah. So, our hope is that we can move forward with this, get the additional right-of-way that's shown in red, and move that trail up to the top of the elevation there. So, if you have any questions for me, I will do my best, like others here tonight. I just got this in front of me, so I'll do the best I can at answering your questions.
Ms. Marshak, you said that the landowners to the west are going to replat?
They're working with Mr. Hadley on some plating in that area, and he had spoke with them, is my understanding, and they were very positive about this. They're excited about the trail being in that location and tying it in with what they see for the future of that property. So, that is why we are looking to move forward with this additional right-of-way.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if they are replating with approaches and, you know, when, once we put this trail in, you know, we're not putting a trail in and then ripping in the trail out because?
Mr. President, yes. They're, they're aware of the project. I made them aware of it last year, and they haven't come in with their final replat yet, so they're, they're right in the middle of this going on. And I think that Loretta has it correct in saying that they're definitely for the dedication of this additional right-of-way for the project because they see it as a benefit for them as well.
And what, and what was the original budget on this?
Ah.
That's probably something you don't have. Maybe Mrs. Carlson has that.
The original task order was 246,770, and then the Amendment One was for an additional 2,000, and now this one is 57,000.
And we have that, but I mean, what did we, what did we originally budget total for it, or?
Oh, for the project?
Yeah, for the project. We don't know.
That I do not have.
I do not have that.
Okay.
Sorry.
I was just wondering if we're at, you know, 250, and we're way over now, or, you know, 300, and we still have some room?
I think we still have way more room.
Yes. I would agree.
Okay. So, I would look for a motion to approve the KLJ task order, the amendment to the KLJ task order.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any further discussions or questions for Mrs. Marshak or Mrs. Carlson? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The amendment is approved. We have about three minutes to the first timetable here. Mr. Hadley, you're going to need more than probably three minutes on the, no? Okay.
I won't, sir.
All right. We have the final plat of the West Dakota Oil Edition.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is Resolution 07, 2017, I believe. It's for the final plat of West Dakota Oil. It's a minor plat on 1.1 acres along the lard. It's basically to clean up some existing property that was either purchased from the railroad or purchased from other folks at some point in time. There's no definite plans that we're aware of to move forward, but it is kind of a cleanup effort for that particular property. The Planning Commission heard it on May 17th. There were no public comments at that time, and staff and the Planning Commission would recommend approval of this resolution.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Hadley from commissioners?
I'd make a motion to approve the final plat.
A motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Final plat is approved. Well, at 5 o'clock, if Mr. Meyer is ready, a couple of minutes early, you can start the city website update, which we've all been looking for.
Oh, I'm sure. Good evening, commissioners. So, what we're actually going to go through, first of all, the first slide here, is what the original website looked like, and this slide represents where we're actually at now as of today. We transitioned it early last week, and actually have seen good results throughout as far as people going to it, and the usability we expect is going to be much easier. The first couple of slides here I'm going to go through, we're going to kind of go compare and contrast. On the old website design, when you went to, say, elected officials, you had to tab through the commissioners. You couldn't see them all at the same time. This is kind of representative throughout the, the old website design. You, you kind of could see one or two people at a time rather than all at once, and you can get to them easier. You can see hovering over, say, one of the pictures, you're going to get their name, you're going to get the position and a little short excerpt of text, and then if you click on it, you'll go into the actual biography of the person. The Channel 19 recordings that we place online, again, if you went to the site, you'd go to a drop-down box, you'd choose it, you'd click load, you'd wait for the video, you'd click play. A little bit- A little bit cumbersome. What we've gone to here is a post-based system where every meeting that we post actually creates its own separate page, kind of comes into here as a masonry view where you can actually see multiple meetings at the same time, click into the one you want, a little less cumbersome. It's also a lot more graphical than the old design. The management staff page, for instance, if you look here, before it was a table of names, now it's actually going to be images of the managers throughout the city as well as their titles, and if you click on them, just like the city commissioner type pages, there's going to be an excerpt about them as far as what they do in their department and what their role is, as well as some contact information. So, some of the major changes between the webpage designs, one is the graphical. I mean, there's definitely no doubt that it is different. The menu system has also been completely revamped. We went to a very categorical design rather than a departmental design. So, rather than having to guess as a citizen, is that permit under, say, engineering, or is that permit under building, you go to the section of forms, and you go to permitting, and you'll pick your permit there. As we post stuff on the website, the old website, we had to take and essentially duplicate the work process, post it on the website, post it on Facebook. Here, we bank one post, and it automatically submits it over to our Facebook page. One of our methods that we used to do, we'd have departments call up, say they want something on the website, and they'd want it on the homepage. We're going away from that. We're going for a very clean and streamlined look. All information is going to be located under a departmental page. If it's a public service announcement or that, it will be posted as a news post, and so if you notice on the first page here, on the sidebar, you see recent posts. That actually displays the last 10 is what we have it set on right now, the last 10 news posts. So, that would be job openings, that would be public service announcements, that would be if we, when we post the city commissioner planning and zoning meetings, it actually makes that notification there so residents can actually see what is actually new on the website rather than having to dig and discover. So, if we go back over here, some of the commonly used links, and this is a big change for citizens, they used to be listed on the homepages, shortcuts on the sidebars. To get that cleaner look, we've now moved all those links to the menu for citizen services. Inconvenience for some, but it gives it a more cleaner, more professional look in the very end. We've also touched on the Citizen Concern Center. This used to be a contracted service where we actually paid a contract to host citizen concerns on a whole different website so that people could come, submit, hey, there's a pothole here, there's a pothole there, this neighbor has high grass, can you take care of that? Now, it's, we've streamlined that, it's all embedded in our website. It's just a simple contact form. When they fill it out, it's going to email the staff member that's in charge of that so that they can delegate it to their staff. The other feature that we put in there is the Facebook feed, and this is more beneficial for citizens who don't use Facebook at all. What it does is it goes out to our Facebook, and it grabs any posts that are made there and pulls them back to the city website. So, you never actually have to go to Facebook to see what's happening on our Facebook page. So, some of the different points that were brought up that I should note here as well, the city code, though it is posted on the website, it is not the most up-to-date at every point in time. As new ordinances are passed here at the commission, they go through a process of codification, but they are only codified into code every three months, and so then they're only posted online every three months. So, the note is, please take in contact staff to get updated versions of code so that you're not working on a code that's been recently changed, or it could be up to three months old. The Channel 19 updates, they're typically the same week as the meeting. We post them online, and this is more so that people who don't view one on the actual Channel 19 know that if you're waiting to view these meetings, they don't happen the exact same day, but they will typically happen within the week. And I already mentioned the recent posts. In the same regard as we did this website upgrade, we also upgraded our payment portal for utility billing. That's actually been live for about two weeks. I'm sure plenty of people have noticed that it looks vastly different. It gives you a more updated feel, kind of just brings us up to newer web standards. It's the same idea behind it. Couple other comments made by citizens this last week is that the Google search, if you search on the website using the search bar, it brings you some results. If they are not correct, it's because Google has to re-index our page, and within a week or so, they should hopefully be returning correct results.
So, if somebody has this, our webpage bookmarked?
No, it was still go there. It's more or less, if they go to our site and they search for, say, ordinances, they might get some of the links to the old website, but those pages have since been removed so that Google can re-index our site with the new information. And as I mentioned earlier, we eliminated the WebQA contract and replaced it with our own portal. Now, some of the newer features here, citizens can now comment on posts that we put on the website. So, say we put up a public service announcement about the Bailey Building closing for a holiday. They can actually post comments. They are moderated comments, meaning I will get a notification, I can go in and decide whether or not that comment should actually be displayed or not, so we can make sure that there's no inappropriate posting. That sort of just gives citizens a little bit more involvement in ongoing events. They can kind of make discussions, and they can follow it. They can also share it on Facebook, and they can share it on Twitter, so you can kind of get that news out.
Are the department heads notified if there's comments to that?
They aren't, though if somebody asks a question, we can obviously take and forward it on to them so that they know what's going on on the website. The old website, though it worked on mobile devices, it was not considered a mobile-friendly in terms of, it showed the same-sized page, but it, all the links shrunk because it was trying to fit that full page onto a mobile device. This new website is mobile-friendly. It removes that sidebar and actually just puts the menu onto a small click menu, you can go into it, but the content is actually resized for mobile. The Tips and Reminders section of the old website, which essentially deals with reminders for new residents or current residents regarding banking or utilities or that, it's now been revamped into more of a business directory and services-type section. Same idea behind it, just a little bit more user-friendly in the fact that we can now list information for the businesses rather than a table of data. Now, the, there are a few new, future updates that are coming with the sanitation or solid waste division. They're working on the recollect software. As that comes into fruition, we're actually going to tie that into the website so that citizens can access that. They can sign up, and that way they can get updates on their, on the garbage rails, they can get updates from that software as well. Some of our future capabilities of the website include online fillable forms, and some of the features that we're also looking into is doing actual e-commerce on the site, so you could go on, fill out an application, and pay for it right then and there rather than having to mail in an application and print off essentially the forms that we provide as of today. And as I mentioned a little bit earlier, we can also now report on page views or number of visitors to the website, whereas we weren't actually capable of doing that before. And if there are no other questions, that is everything, but if there are questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Meyer?
Aaron, was most of this work contracted out or mostly done by you and your department?
No, this is actually all done by the department.
That's what I thought. Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work. It looks phenomenal. It'd be nice for the citizens. You did a really, really great job.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thanks, Aaron.
Our next timetable is 5:20. I think we are much done with everything else. Ms. Kreip, can we move up if the parties are?
For the library one, I believe that would be fine because it wasn't, it's not that we had to be published at a specific time, so there shouldn't be any issues with that.
Okay, well, if, Ms. Enman, if you are willing?
So, President and Commissioners, I bring to you today a memorandum of understanding between the Dickinson Area Public Library and the Friends of the Dickinson Public Library Incorporated. As we've been working with the Friends through the last couple of years, there's been some confusion about what the library's responsibilities are towards them, what theirs are towards us, and what our relationship with them should be. As I was doing some investigation, it was suggested to me by our state librarian that we should draft a memorandum of understanding just to make those things very clear, both that these are separate, although complementary, organizations, and also what each one has a right to expect from the other. This memorandum was reviewed by Attorney Kreip, and her suggestions were incorporated in it. It has been approved by both the library board and the Friends of the Public Library, so I bring it to you today, asking for your approval as well.
Okay, any questions about the memorandum of understanding between us and the library? For Director Ennin or Ms. Kreip? Since you've crafted or were used in this, I would say you're probably good with it.
That's correct.
Any questions?
And this just basically clears up the longstanding relationship that both have had and gets everybody on the same page and...
Make sure that each one understands what the other's expectations are.
Right. Yeah. I would make a recommendation to approve the memorandum of understanding for the library.
Okay, we have a recommendation or a motion to approve?
Second.
In a second. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing on the vote, Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. I guess we do have about 18 minutes, so there's no reports from Building and Codes. Commissioners, do you have anything? We'll move down there. Anything that you would like to discuss, any concerns? Nothing?
Do not.
Mr. President?
Yep.
I'm a member of the public. Could I ask a question?
That's where I was going to move next. Public issues of city concern that are not on the agenda. You have about 18 minutes, now 17, so...
A good officer takes 22.
I'm a local resident and property owner in the city of Dickinson. I'd like to address a proposal that you have underway regarding recycling. Now, I understand that you've put out an RFP and that you've received a couple of copies or responses to that RFP, and that you will be sitting down and considering the future of recycling and collection within the city of Dickinson. I'd like to address this proposal and hopefully discourage the commission from moving ahead with this undertaking. When we discuss recycling programs, we all start with a warm and fuzzy feeling about its use, especially at the local level. However, there are a number of other pertinent elements that come into picture that speaks to the practicality, sustainability, and the economy of instituting an effort within our community. Quite honestly, Dickinson has one of the best solid waste programs in the upper Midwest, and certainly within the state of North Dakota. It really doesn't need any fixing. I believe that I have some standing in this subject with it being in the community for over 40 years and involved in many of the activities that have dealt with the landfill and solid waste collection. I was there when Kent Hudson from Royal Oaks presented the deed to the pit to the city of Dickinson. I was involved in construction of this industrial roadway, the East Industrial Roadway that runs from the General Steel out to Lehigh Road and then consequently out to the landfill. I was involved with the first, purchasing the first baler that went into the old Fisher Building. And when I directed, I also directed a solid waste study more than 25 years ago when I was the director of the Roosevelt-Custer Regional Planning Council that indicated a broad-based recycling program the city would want to consider was neither economical or sustainable at that time. Now, I even knew Steve Tollison back when he was a rookie, when he was with the State Health Department and the institution, or the initiation of many of the regulations regarding the solid waste program. From my experience, it doesn't appear that much has changed in the very nature of implementing and administering a recycling system within the city for the city, the size of the city of Dickinson, or for the Southwest region. There are some inherent problems associated with going forth, and I'd like to highlight those. Number one is the issue of equity and fairness. The RFP only looks at the 6,650 single-family residences, condos, and selected trailer parks within the community. You're asking a specific segment of our community to foot a bill for the whole city and the region and leaving out a number of multifamily, commercial enterprises, motels, and other entities who are major users and producers of solid waste. Further, Dickinson takes in waste from commercial haulers throughout the region and does not require, would not require any type of separation of the materials. All these users are not being addressed in the proposal or the proposed project, but yet expects the individual housing units in Dickinson to carry the financial burden of instituting the process. Currently, we're paying $13 a month for garbage collection, and it continues to increase periodically. You're asking for another four, or six to seven dollar increase for the services that will only come twice a month rather than weekly. This increase is highly significant and unrealistic. The RFP asks for a breakdown of cost increases over the next 10 years and any additional escalators or service fees that go along with it. This alone is an indicator that we'll see increases beyond what is envisioned at this point. The economic strain on homeowners, this has to be noted. The numerous elderly, those on fixed income, and lower-income residents will be duly affected. We know that MDU now is in process of looking for an increase in utility rates, and we know that the, within the next year or two, that the property owners will be footing a bill for the new middle school, which also basically compounds the strain on a larger segment of our city's population. At the same time, the city is undertaking an update of the property valuation process which conceivably adds to the homeowner's debt, a situation not helped by the state legislature's limited action on property tax relief. We should also note that your proposed action is not a tax per se, but just another fee that can easily be put on local property. Another question we have to ask is, who's going to be responsible for the policing of the recyclable program and ensure that the right material is placed in the new bins? The city has experienced vast misuse of its own collection sites where cardboard, grass-only, paper products, and oil disposal units are mixed and contaminated, making voluntary recyclables basically useless. You know how easy it is to throw a bag of garbage or even an old paint can into the new residential container unless you or the contractor walks along beside and checks each one? The contractor can't find anybody, namely because they don't have the authority. The contractor can't find anybody, namely because they don't have the authority, but thus the city assumes that additional responsibility. In the same vein, an additional container cramps many of the smaller properties that are storing their units during the week. And if, a lot of people put their garbage cans in their garages, and even if you have a single vehicle garage, it's going to be difficult just to maintain those. The RFP also refers to the city providing compensation to the contractor for marketing of the collected material. Now, why should the city be involved, be financially responsible for marketing inasmuch as the contractor should have these markets already in place at the time of any award made to the contract, with the contract? In a more practical sense, if the markets are there, then a revenue source exists that the city should be able to share in. Sustainability recycling is always in question. A recent article that came out of the US New, USA Today from the April twenty-first edition, or attachment to the Dickinson Press, highlighted the problems that sustaining a recycling market is currently having and is declining nationally over the last couple of years. If those markets Dickinson pursues takes a dive, are the local homeowners going to be expected to subsidize a recycling effort or the contractor, or even the contractor? I know there's a finite, finite, finite number of lifespan, or to the lifespan of the current landfill. In discussion with city staff, a figure of ten years pops up as being the amount of time left for that landfill. When I took a look at or a visit to the pit, I estimated that that term might even be longer. I understand that a consultant has been engaged at this point to help find a new way to expand the present site or even locate a new one. And looking over recent budgets and capital improvement plans, significant funds have been allocated to proceed. One pertinent question needs to be posed. Will implementing a residential collection and recycling program really prolong the life of the existing landfill by any realistic measure as opposed to conducting and financing a startup program with questionable results? Is the cost-benefit criteria to the management of Dickinson Solid Waste actually being met under the proposed action? Is there a practical venture over the long run? Can it sustain itself on its own merit, or will the ratepayers wind up supporting the activity of a questionable value? An activity of a questionable value? This is one of those topics that on the surface makes everyone feel warm and fuzzy, but does not have the qualities of practicality or continuity for the best interests of the City of Dickinson. Thus, I would encourage you to be cautious, diligent, and realistic before you moving forward with initiating such a program. Appreciate your, the time.
Thank you, Ms. Lambloom.
Thank you.
And we'll be having further meetings on this-
Yes, we will.
Where we will give opportunities for more concerned citizens to weigh in on both sides of the fence so that we can make an informed decision and move forward with what's in the best interest of the community.
All the citizens that have contacted me, I have told them that when we do have the public hearings about this, I have encouraged them to come in force on either side.
On either side because-
Yes, we need to hear.
Yeah, our job is to represent the community, and we need to know where they stand on this issue so that we can make a good informed decision on their behalf.
Yes, I agree. So, if you're watching on Channel nineteen-
Stay tuned to the website.
Stay tuned to the website. Please turn out when we do announce that we will be discussing the recycling program, so... We have about six minutes. I know there was some discussion over on your end, I noticed.
Mr. Hirschfeld did inform me that the applicant for the five-thirty timetable agenda is in, in the audience and present, so I think you could probably proceed, given that no action will occur before the actual timetable.
Okay. I guess then I would ask Mr. Hirschfeld to proceed with the West Ridge parcel abatements.
Mr. President, Commissioners, thank you. We do have in the audience tonight representatives of the Roars Group. Mr. Michael Rom is here to introduce the others that he has with him. The one thing I want to bring to your attention right away is that we have twenty-seven abatements. Three of those are parcels that have apartments on it. Eight have improved vacant lots, and sixteen are unimproved vacant lots. My memory serves me correctly, all but two of those, the supporting material that was given to me, support the abated value. All the rest of them have a value different than what is on the abatement application. That's a little different than what I'm used to seeing. Not quite sure how we proceed with that, but with that, I guess I turn it over to Mr. Rom and allow them to proceed with, with their case.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hirschfeld. Rom?
Good evening. My name is Michael Rom. I'm an attorney with the Fredrickson &amp; Byron Law Firm in Fargo. And I'm here representing the Roars Group. I'm glad to be joined by Shane Roars and Jim Roars and Sarah West from Roars, and then my law partner, Chris Stafford, who's from our Minneapolis office. I'm going to sit down in about ten seconds and let Chris handle the rest of this, but I wanted to say good evening and introduce everybody. And then with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris, who will handle the rest of the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Now, I want to begin by reminding of the statutory standard that we're all here to apply tonight. That is that for property tax purposes, property needs to be assessed at its true and full value. And that's the-
Could you just state your full name for the-
I apologize, yes. Christopher Stafford.
Okay, thank you.
So, true and full value is the value determined by considering the earning or productive capacity, if any, of the property, the market value, if any, of the property, and all other matters that affect the actual value of the property to be assessed. And that's from the Century Code fifty-seven oh two oh one. When we're talking about considering every factor that affects actual value, that's fundamentally tied into due process and equal protection for taxpayers. To come up with a fee simple market value that's affected by market conditions and objective evidence allows taxpayers to be confident that they are being assessed not on an arbitrary basis but based on the percentage contribution that they bring to the tax base based on the actual value of their property and not based on any other factors. In general, when we talk about market value, we're thinking about fee simple market value. It doesn't, market, it doesn't value the personal property or contract rights. We're talking about the full estate in an arms-length transaction with an informed buyer and seller, typically motivated and not under duress, informed of the quality of the property, and acting in their own best interests. The North Dakota Supreme Court has recognized that there are three primary methods for determining the true and full value of property under these standards, which are generally accepted appraisal practice and widely accepted throughout multiple jurisdictions. And those are the sales comparison approach, the income approach, and the cost approach. Now, we considered all three approaches to value when we're talking about the three abatements that respect the improved parcels with apartment buildings on them. For the land parcels, we consider the sales comparison approach because there's no income and there's nothing constructed to value. But we considered all three approaches appropriately. I, I understand that there's a question about why the information packets that you've got in front of you differ in their conclusion of value from the abatement application. What you have in front of you is the owner's opinion of value. And if I could turn over here to Ms. West. These were developed by Roars. And do you want to, could you come up here for just a second? Can you just inform the Commission briefly about how these were developed?
Yeah, so Chris just asked for a lot of-
State your name.
Sarah West.
Okay, thank you.
For different numbers that we have and that some of them that I talked about about a month ago and helped basically just formulate what this means in the statute so that we could educate you, or not educate you guys, but use our information to come up with the right answer. So, we, there are numbers that we worked through this for the last three weeks during that period of when we were going to meet with you guys on the fifteenth today. So we've had multiple conversations. These are our numbers. These are where we feel the true and full value would be.
So, to be clear, this is what Roars has adopted as its opinion of value?
Yes.
All right. The reason that the numbers are a little bit different is basically because we refined the analysis from the time that the application for abatement was completed and filed. And when the opinion of value was completed and filed, we recognize that from a legal standpoint, the request for an abatement sets the limit of what you could give us in terms of a reduction. But if we have subsequently looked at the, at the numbers in, in greater detail and determined that what we asked for in the application for abatement was too low, we've given you a higher number and said that that's, that that's our opinion of value. If we have determined that the number that we put in our application for abatement is too high, and we think that our number is, that the, the actual value is lower than that, we're telling what you, what we think the actual number is with the understanding that we can't seek a lower number than what we put on our application for abatement. But the point of these packets is to get to what we consider the actual number to be for true and full value under the statutory standard. I've also got some packets of supplemental material that were not part of what we had originally submitted. And Mr. Hirschfeld, you said about seven would be? We've got multiple copies here.
I, I believe so. We have one for the three Commissioners, for Attorney Kreip and Deputy Administrator Carlson, as well as myself, and maybe one for the, the record. That should be adequate.
May I pass these out?
Yeah, go ahead. There's no issue with that, Ms. Kreip, is there?
So the first thing to do in determining true and full value, which involves figuring out the market value, is to see what's been happening with the market. And the most important graph, the most important page in this packet is on the very top. This is what oil prices were doing over the last five years. As of February twenty-fourteen, oil was at a hundred and seven dollars and ten cents per barrel of unrefined crude. As of February twenty-fifteen, that was down to fifty-one ninety-five. And as of our assessment date of February first twenty-sixteen, it was down to thirty-two sixty. Now, the housing boom in the whole of western North Dakota has been driven by high oil prices. High demand for oil meant high demand for oil workers, and those oil workers had high demand for places to stay. And commensurately, when demand for oil fell and people's hours got cut and people's jobs got cut, demand for housing fell commensurately. So we've got this drop-off that happens right around August two thousand and fourteen. And then we've got a new stable pattern that, that happens about at fifty dollars a barrel. And, but as of our assessment date, as of February one twenty-sixteen, we were at the lowest point on this graph. And when it went back up again, it didn't go back up to a hundred and ten. It went back up to forty or fifty bucks a barrel. Now, this has led to some widely recognized effects in the marketplace. Now, in your packets, there are a few, few published resources. So this one's from, this one is from Bakken.com. This is from Bakken News. If I can just read this. "The recent real estate boom in North Dakota was primarily based on the expectation of continued population group growth and high wages. Developers and investors made assumptions that oil prices would never go below sixty dollars per barrel and that an endless sea of workers would continue to flood into the area for high-paying jobs. Many expected this to last for the next fifteen to twenty years. As oil prices started to decline in the last half of twenty-fourteen, investors, policymakers, and industry executives anticipated a short-term correction and a quick recovery. By April twenty-fifteen, it was clear that the oil markets were in a secular decline brought on by oversupply in the global energy markets and fueled by a deep recession in China." And oil prices haven't come back. And housing demand has not come back. We have in these packets all the financial data and construction cost data, rent rolls, income and expense statements that you need to take a look at the numbers in the packets that you received with the opinion of value to duplicate our analysis. But I want to talk about each of the individual analyses that we did, that we considered in coming to our opinion of the true and full value. First of all, we talked about the, the first approach to value is the sales comparison approach. So this is based on the idea that the best indication of true and full value is what market participants are actually doing in the marketplace. Right now, market participants aren't buying or selling anything in multifamily housing. We found only one sale since the drop-off on that graph, only one sale since August two thousand and fourteen of a multifamily housing property in Dickinson. Now, if there are any others that the city is aware of that we haven't found in our research, tell us and we'll consider them and we'll incorporate them into our analysis. But as of right now, we found just one sale of a multifamily housing complex. It was a hundred units. It's the Jefferson Creek Apartments right off of Exit sixty-one. Hundred units sold for four million, so that's forty thousand dollars a unit. Fully leased at the time of sale and at a cap rate of about eighteen percent. Now, just for comparison purposes, the apartment buildings that we have under application for abatement at West Ridge, the assessment is a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars plus a unit. And at Prairie Winds one and two, the assessment is at a hundred and fifteen, close to a hundred and sixteen per unit. The only sale that we've got has forty thousand a unit. It was constructed in twenty-fourteen, the same as these. It's got a better location. It's closer to commercial passageways. Fully leased, ours aren't fully leased, and it went for forty thousand dollars a unit. Right now, that's the best indication under the sales comparison approach of what the value is of an actual market transaction. We ultimately did not rely on the sales comparison approach informing our final opinion of value because we feel you need more than one sale to actually come to a conclusion of value under the sales comparison approach. But this is a superior property in location. It's an equal property in age. It's a superior property in occupancy. And it sold for a third of the assessment of Prairie Winds and a quarter of the assessment of West Ridge. We also considered the income approach to value. This is the principle of anticipation that a property is worth to an owner what they can expect as a return on their investment using market-based investment criteria. We based our rent under the income approach. So, yeah, under the income approach, you come up with a pro forma, figure out what you're making per year, figure out what kind of return of an investment you would expect, and use that to drive an indication of what a reasonable purchase price would be. So the market rent we used is the actual market rent, asking market rent, that was in place at the subject property through twenty-sixteen. At the beginning of the year, it was a little bit higher. At the end of the year, it was lower because vacancy was still very high. And so we picked the midpoint between those two ranges, what it was at the beginning- And so we picked the midpoint between those two ranges, what it was at the beginning of the year, what it was at the end of the year. We went with the midpoint of that and assumed that as our market rent. These are asking rents. And remember that when you're negotiating a rent, what the seller is asking is not necessarily what the buyer is willing to pay. There's usually a downward impact of negotiation on asking rents. But we went with the asking rents. So that's a fairly conservative assumption on our part. On vacancy, the actual vacancy at Westridge as of the assessment date was 46%. That hasn't gone down. As of February 2017, it's at 48%. Prairie Winds 1, that was doing pretty well at the beginning of 2016. It was 11% vacant, and it went up to 28% vacant by the end of the year. And at Prairie Winds 2, which was newer, so it hadn't gone through a full lease-up period, 80% vacant as of the assessment date. Now it's 44% vacant. The estimates of market vacancy, stabilized market vacancy that we relied on in our income approach ranged between 15 and 20%, which is about as good as it was at the lowest point for the lowest building. So again, our vacancy assumption is very conservative compared to what the actual vacancy is at the subject property. With respect to the capitalization rate. Capitalization rate is what you expect to make off of your property in a single year in order to justify the investment. So if you've got, to make it simple, a $4 million property and you're making 400,000 a year off of it, you've got a capitalization rate of 10%. You're getting a 10% rate of return on your purchase price investment in a single calendar year. Cap rates are market derived. We figure out what a cap, what an appropriate cap rate should be based on what activity we're seeing in the marketplace. We found three listings for apartment buildings that haven't sold that are in the opinions of value that you've got in front of you. Those listed capitalization rates were at 10, 12, and 12.74%. Again, those are based on the asking sale price and not an actual sale price after negotiation lowered the sale price, which means that those capitalization rates would tend to go higher after a buyer has negotiated a purchase price downward from the asking price. We also recall that the Jefferson Creek Apartments that sold for $40,000 a unit sold at an 18% capitalization rate. That's the only sale capitalization rate that we have since August 2014 when demand for housing started falling along with oil prices. Now, I'm going to ask Ms. West again to interject here because you told me about the last transaction that Roars was involved in, and I'd like you to tell the commission if you would.
So at the height of the oil boom in August of 2014 is the last time we sold an investment property, rental real estate, 234 units over in state's addition, and that cap rate was at 10.
And have you had any other transactions since then?
No.
Would you consider a 10% cap rate transaction under these current market conditions?
Yeah, that would be great for us, but not, nobody would do, nobody would pay that cap rate.
Have you seen any single-digit cap rates in market transactions since August 2014?
Not in western North Dakota.
Thank you. There's another piece of your packet here. This sale is in Williston, and it was something that we came across after we submitted the valuation analyses to you. So it's not mentioned in the packet. But this is the sale of the View 28 apartment building in Williston, 93 units. And it sold for $6,950,000, so that's just a little under $75,000 a unit. And that's 40,000 less than the assessment at Prairie Winds and about 90,000 less than the assessment at Westridge. But the second page of that, and this is the green pages with the CBRE logo. Second page of this is interesting to me because it points out what the relationship is between capitalization rates and investment criteria. Capitalization rate is a measure of risk. If you have a 5% or 6% capitalization rate, it's because you're expecting to, it's a low-risk investment, the same way that the lower interest rate on a T-bill is an indication that it's considered a safer investment than a particular stock or other sort of bond. So if your cap rate is lower, it's a, it's a less risky investment. That also means that you're making less each year compared to the purchase price than you would with a higher capitalization rate. So there are two, there are three, but let's talk about the two capitalization rate analyses that are on this page. The actual, the pro forma stabilized capitalization rate based on the actual performance of the subject property at the time of sale is 19.21%. So based on the purchase price of $6,950,000, the purchaser expects close to $2 million back per year in order to make the investment worth it because it's a risky investment. Because the buyer expects that they might not be making that much for long. And if you look over at the next column, the market analysis by an appraiser who put together an estimate of what the market rent would do over the next number of years on a stabilized basis after the sale, the cap rate's 7.62%. But you only get there by having, more than having, the anticipated gross income. So in the future, you've got a more, you've got a less risky investment, but less money coming in. If you lower the rent, if you, if you, so there's an inversely proportional relationship between the NOI and the cap rate. If you anticipate that your rents are going to go down over time, your cap rate's going to be higher because you've got more investment risk. And then if you, but if you've got, if you're using a low cap rate, then that means you've got to commensurately bring down the rents to a level where the, it's not as risky to assume that you'll be making that lower amount. We performed a direct capitalization analysis, which is the single calendar year income approach value. We also did a direct capital, a discounted cash flow analysis to anticipate the idea of what the, what the cash flow would look like on a present value basis over a 10-year holding period. So in that one year, that single-year analysis, even though vacancy is at 40% overall on these three properties, we assumed a stabilized vacancy of 15 to 20%. The DCF analysis, the discounted cash flow analysis, takes us from the actual vacancy right now of 45% or 80% and it steps it down over time to 5% in 10 years. It steps down that the anticipated vacancy rather aggressively, in fact, and it assumes we have our vacancy at each property over the next couple of years. That is an incredibly optimistic assumption. And under that optimistic assumption, we're still coming in at numbers that are at a considerably lower amount than the assessed value for each of the three apartment properties. Finally, we considered the cost approach to value. A cost approach is generally considered, under generally accepted appraisal practices, to set a ceiling on value. Because why would you pay in the market $10 million for a property when you could build one and put the sticks and bricks in the ground yourself for five? So if you're going to have true and actual value, the cost approach sets the upper boundary of where you should be. I want to point out, I want to emphasize that because the actual cost of the, of building Westridge, of buying the land and putting in the, and putting in the improvements is $19,315,000. Now, that's before we take into account any issues of economic obsolescence or physical deterioration, any of the other factors that the statute requires us to consider, since we're considering, since for purposes of due process to find true and full value, we have to consider all factors that might affect market value. But before considering those, we're at 19.3 million, and the assessed market value is 25.7 million. So just on that one issue, that's $6.3 million in excess of the cost to just go next door and build the same buildings yourself. There's no reason any market participant would pay $25.7 million in the open market for this property if they could build an identical one next door for 16, for 19.3. And then we did consider the economic obsolescence in the marketplace. There are three forms of obsolescence under the cost approach that need to be considered. Physical deterioration. These are mostly new buildings, so there's not much physical deterioration there. Functional obsolescence, which is usually a function of outdated or outmoded design. Again, these are newer buildings, so there's nothing there. Then economic obsolescence is the things that the owner can't control that happen in the broader economy that affected the value of the property. And what affected the broader economy in 2014 was the precipitous drop in oil prices starting in August 2014, from which there's been no real recovery. All of these properties were commenced and well beyond the planning stage, and money invested and land purchased before the oil prices started to fall. By December 31, 2014, Westridge had been entirely built, and Prairie Winds 1 and 2 both had more than half a million of improvements stuck in the ground after buying, after already having purchased the land. When a developer decides to build a building that they expect to make income for them, they put together projections of what they think that income will be. And you want to, Sarah, do you want to talk again about what those anticipated projections were?
So the anticipated projections for Westridge, that's the 155 complex, was over $3 million of revenue a year. And for Prairie Winds 1 was 462,000 per year.
That was for both?
Oh, that, for both, yeah. They're 236 boxes next to each other.
The, our estimate of what's actually going on at the, at the property right now is about, for Westridge, it's about two-thirds of that. It's a, it's a $1.1 million drop from what we had anticipated before the drop, drop in oil prices would be our rent. And at Prairie Winds 1 and 2, it's, it's about a 25% drop. And that's just from the gross revenue and before taking any expenses into account or any change in investment criteria into account. So we calculated economic obsolescence based on the delta, the difference between what we thought we might earn, what would make it feasible to construct this, these projects at the time, the income expectations that we would have to have for it to be worth it to spend the money that we spent, and what we're actually making. And the delta between those two capitalized at a reasonable investment rate is a measure of economic obsolescence that's recognized, it's as the income loss method in the, in the 14th edition of the Appraisal of Real Estate. It's accepted under generally accepted appraisal practices and the universal standards of professional appraisal practice. So we've estimated that to come to our final conclusion of value for each of the three apartment buildings. So with respect to each of the three buildings, our final opinion of value for each one, for the Westridge Apartments, after considering all three approaches to value, after reconciling them, and the, the direct cap, the discounted cash flow and the cost approach, just to look at, at Westridge in particular, they're all within $1 million of each other. They all come into a very tight range, which is usually in appraisal practice, 20% is kind of where you want to land, no more than 20% variance between your different approaches. And these vary less than 10%. Under the direct cap, we've got about $11 million. Under the discounted cash flow, 10.5, and under the cost approach, 11.5. And the owner's final opinion of value as of the assessment date is for $11,130,000. For Prairie Wind 1 and 2, these are largely identical properties, but Prairie Wind 1 is a little bit older. It's had a little bit more time to lease up. So it's, it's listed at $1,670,000 is the owner's opinion of value, and for Prairie Wind 2, $1,560,000. Again, I think that Roars here has considered very carefully the market evidence that's available in the marketplace. We have located every available capitalization rate that was appropriate off of an arm's-length transaction or listing. We've tried to make an appropriate determination of rent. We have estimated a stabilized vacancy far lower than actual vacancy. And we've chosen a cap rate that's right in the middle of the range of the listings and far lower than what we've actually seen in the transactions in the marketplace. We also have, those, the three apartment buildings, I won't take as long to go through the 24 land parcels. With those, it's, it's all just a sales comparison approach. I want to point out, and again, I don't want to go through each one of these parcels because you already have the written materials in front of you, but I want to point a couple of things out. The smallest parcel under application for abatement here is just under 51,000 square feet. It's generally understood in appraisal and valuation that there's an inversely proportional relationship between the size of something that you're selling, whether it's a building or land, and the value per square foot. So the smaller the space, the higher the per-square-foot value. The larger the space, the lower the per-square-foot value. So our smallest, and so setting aside all other considerations, the one that would probably have the highest per-square-foot value is 50,925. Our largest is about 1.1 million square feet. We located 12 comparable sales of developable land in, throughout western North Dakota. Two of them are in Dickinson. We had to cast our net wide because as with multifamily housing, nobody's buying or selling this land because it's not worth what it used to be. And I promise this is the last time I'll interject, but can you, Ms. West, can you tell us what the, what Roars' experience was with respect to the sales volume in land transactions over the past several years?
Yeah, so in 2013, I believe, that's what we started with, right? We had about 34 million in land sales in western North Dakota. In 2014, it was about 15 million. And 2015 was about 5 million, so a huge decrease. Last year, we did a million, but that wasn't even in western North Dakota, so.
And the, the sales that did take place in 2015, had they been under contract in 2014?
Correct, yep, they were under contract.
So nobody's buying or selling this land, that means there's not much of a market for it. We found 12 transactions. They range in size from about 18,000 square feet, so about two-fifths, 40% of the size of our smallest parcel under application here, to about the size of our largest parcel under application, about 1.1 million square feet. The highest price we could find for developable land in the marketplace since August 24, August of 2014 throughout all of western North Dakota was $8.68 per square foot. And that's for the smallest comparable parcel at about 18,000 square feet. But our assessments for, we've got about six parcels on the second edition, Block 4, lots 5 through 10. Those are all between 50,000 and 60,000 square feet. Those are assessed between 884 and 888, higher than the highest price we could find in the marketplace, even though they're larger parcels and should be worth less on a per-square-foot basis. The 83,740 square foot, Block 14, Lot 18 in the second edition, 889 a square foot. The 467,000 square foot, Westridge second edition, Lot 2, Block 15, so about 10 acres now, 863 a square foot. We've also got in Westridge first edition, Block 2, there are several lots, and these are recognized, these are prime commercial lots, and that is taken into account in our valuation analysis. They are assessed at 1801 to 1807 per square foot. There's no market support for that. Nowhere in the market. The smallest parcels we could find, the highest values we could find since August 2014, 868. And very many of the parcels under application for abatement are much larger than that and assessed much higher than that. Even though for many of the very largest parcels at issue here, there's no curbside improvements, there's no utility hookups. Those exist on some of the parcels and not on others, and those are identified on a parcel by- parcel-by-parcel basis in the packet in front of you. But when we looked for comparable land that was of similar size of the 10 to 20 acre range of our largest parcels, it was about 20 cents per square foot. The highest value we found was about a buck fifty per square foot, and that was in a much more prime location. We concluded to a value of 40 to 60 cents per square foot for that land at the very largest land parcels. You can't find a large land parcel like that that sells for more than a buck fifty, and most of them sell for 20 cents. We've considered every sale that we could find, and again, if the city is aware of sales that we don't know about, we want to learn about them, and we will incorporate them into our analysis, and we'll take a look and see if they give an indication of a fee simple, arm's-length transaction. But as with the apartment buildings, we've done our diligence to scour through the marketplace for all the transactions that we're aware of. Our only really limiting criteria being that we're not going to value the value as of February 1st, 2016, based on the market that existed in 2012 and 2013 when oil was a buck ten a barrel and not at 30, like it was on our assessment date. I would be happy to entertain any questions if the commission has any.
Any questions for Mr.?
Stafford.
Stafford, Mr. Stafford. What are you currently marketing these properties for sale at?
I don't know, Sarah.
Well, it depends on the property.
Well, I'm just, let's start with lot 5, block 4, West Ridge 2nd. If I came in tomorrow and I wanted to buy that, what would you quote me for a price?
West Ridge 2nd would probably be about $4 a square foot, which, I have to look at the lot, I don't have the map.
Would that be concurrent for all of those properties that you feel are worth $2.53 a square foot?
Okay, so, which, which lot again?
Lot 5, block 4, or West Ridge 2nd.
Lot 5. It doesn't have a road to it right now, so we would have to...
Hey, let's pick an improved one.
Invest more infrastructure.
Let's pick an improved one, which one's an improvement we could talk about?
Block 2, West Ridge first, block 2 are the improved lots.
So that would be what we've designated as parcels 17 through 22.
Okay. So my same question, West Ridge first, block 2, lot 8, your value coming up with is 880? What are you currently marketing the property at?
This one? This one maybe?
It's lot 8.
Yeah. Our starting price would be 1150.
When you say starting price, explain.
Like if advertising, so if you came in and said, "I want a lot," that's where we would start, and you would negotiate it down.
Okay, what about block 2, lot 13? Would you have a value of $9.25 on?
Lot 13, 22.
All right, block 2, lot 13?
That would be about a 30% premium, so another 50 cents, 12 to 1250.
Explain to me the difference then. If you think the market value is 12 to 1250, why?
Yeah.
You only think we should assess it at $9?
Explain the difference, we won't get 1250 for it.
Do you think you'll get $9? $10, $11?
No, I don't think we'll get, it's sold, honestly. If somebody approached us at these prices, we would have a hard time saying no, even though we would have invested more.
I understand, and I understand, and I mean, go into one of the apartments, let's say Prairie Winds 2. We're assessed at 4.1 million, you say the value's worth 1.56 million.
Yeah.
I mean, you feel that's a, if you had a buyer come in, you would sell it for that?
Yeah, we're actually looking at doing that about 40,000 per unit, between 40 and
If I could just add a side note really quick on the two Prairie Winds apartment buildings, the smaller ones, 36 units apiece. A portion of the units in both of those buildings are affordable housing and rent restricted. The maximum allowable rent that we could charge, though, under the agreement to keep those as affordable housing, is currently greater than the market will accept. So the actual market rent is lower than the maximum restricted rent. So when we're talking about being able to consider every factor, there is a cap on where the rents could be charged that in 10 years, if the market improved dramatically, would serve as an effective ceiling on the market rent that, but right now, that's not in play because we're well below the ceiling the HUD would set.
And HUD negotiates the cap? Or is that set in stone for a period of time? They come in annually and look at the?
They're annually percentage-based.
So they come in annually, look at what the market is, I guess, or the employment numbers are?
Yeah.
And then they adjust it with you?
Yes, we do an audit every year.
I guess I have a question, but it's more for Mr. Hirschfeld. In our assessed value, the 25,692,000, is that the value before the board of adjustment, where we did the 10%? If I'm correct, I think we did a 10%? Is that the adjusted value, or is that was the value beforehand?
Mr. President, that's a good question. I believe that would be after the 10% structural adjustment we gave.
The 25.6 is the, what was listed on our assessment, so that...
Okay, so that's, that is not with the 10% reduction?
That would, should be with the 10%, and we can certainly look that up real quickly if you like.
Yes, I would like that.
Jeremy, if you'd enter in, 2500, 0100, 0200, please. 0100, 0200. We click on prior year, and the 2016 valuation would have been 25,692, yes. So it would have been with the 10%.
Or I thought you were referring to 2017, okay. This is the 2016 assessment, yeah.
And that would have been...
The 10% you were referring to, that's for 2017's assessment, correct?
No, that was, we're for 16.
So we're going back to 16?
But that's what's here, right?
Yeah, no, I know, but if we're, if you went back to the whole multifamily market and said for 2016, those taxes are already paid, they were due in March of 17, so you're going back and making a refund for everybody? Is that what you're saying?
What we did at the board of adjustment, or I mean, the board of equalization a month ago, that 10% was for 17, or for 16?
And that, we ended up with 25% on the structural for 17.
Okay, that was, you're correct, that was for 17.
The current $20 million valuation, and then last year, there was 10% to structural, and that shows the decrease between 15 and 16, and that we see up above there.
Any other questions for Ms. West or Mr. Stafford? I have none either.
I very much would like to thank the commission for their time and for listening to my spiel, much appreciated.
Mr. Hirschfeld?
Mr. President, thank you. It's a lot different when we sit here in June of 2017 with hindsight. If we look at the valuation for 2016, that's based off of market information from 2015, and I believe the income data we heard was for the 2016 year, not the 2015 year, so we're not apples-to-apples there, if I'm understanding the data that you presented correctly. When we start talking about the entrepreneurial profit and the cost approach that was worked up, I like to take entrepreneurial profit depreciation from the market. I'm going to take the applicant at their word of what it cost to build these structures at 116, 17,000 or whatever it was. I have no data that doesn't support that's what their actual costs were, but we do have some data of what properties we're selling for, and the same builder, same quality of property, sold for 169,000 the year before. So if the data that we had, entrepreneurial profit wasn't 10%, it was closer to 45%. And sitting here, we're right now, looking back at 16 values based off of market in 15, I'm not entirely sold that somebody who was selling properties for 169 a unit would have taken 40,000 a unit in 2015. And the other thing to remember is the scope of what we're working with. We're not talking about just a simple, one property fee, simple appraisal here, we're doing a mass appraisal system. So what is the median amongst similar-type properties? You know, how is that considered into what we've done for all apartment properties? And on top of that, we have to consider the sales ratio analysis and how the state reviews the data that we have. In order to achieve a valuation that they're looking for, and have done that across the board for all apartments, we would have seen a very drastic increase to all other commercial properties in order to stay within that 90 to 100% tolerance range. And so it's, you know, not just the single property that we consider when we do our valuation. And so we appreciate the data that we have now, we don't necessarily disagree with what's happened to the market in that time, and, you know, that, if you will, we're chasing the market down, and we've discussed that for the last several years here. The question is, do we do something for this property? Is there something about this property that's different than what we've done for all other apartment buildings for 2016? And in my opinion, there isn't, and there isn't for any of the apartments or for the improved lots.
So if I'm hearing you right, our constraint is that we are assessing at last year's values, where things were, but we're billing it out, and they're trying to pay the bill with this year's revenue is...
Or 15 and 16.
Right.
Which this property, right, this is a 16 abatement.
We're always a year behind on our valuation, and then that tax is always paid a year later. So we're almost two years difference between when the tax is actually paid and when the values or the sales, the market data was occurring, you know, that set these values.
And the same could be said for the city, that we, because of that lag time, we also missed out on increased revenue when we were having rents that were comparable to rent in New York City, here in Dickinson, North Dakota, that we missed out on assessing at that value because, again, the way our assessment process works, we're always, we're going to miss the upside and we're going to be slower on the downside of how that works.
That would be accurate.
Would it be all right if I spoke to a couple of those points?
Sure, go ahead.
So with respect to, just starting with the entrepreneurial profit under the cost approach, I can see where you're coming from on some of those prior sales that would have higher entrepreneurial profit. But then if you were looking at what the income shortfall would be to have to justify the high levels of entrepreneurial profit, those market expectations were out of whack with what actually happened. So even if you increased the entrepreneurial profit to 45% in our analysis, and I'll give you the spreadsheet so you can run the numbers if you like, because we're measuring the feasibility based on a shortfall analysis, if the 45% entrepreneurial profit increases the base cost to 30 million, then we've got that much more shortfall, that much more economic obsolescence that's driving the actual value down as of February 2nd, 2016. So we could increase the entrepreneurial profit, but that means that we would have to have that much more income expectation, and the shortfall would be that much bigger when it came short of those increased expectations. With respect to the, what I think you're hinting at is an issue under the retrospective valuation rule under U.S.PAP that says that as of your valuation date, you've got to be using information that was either known as of or reasonably anticipated as of the assessment date. The assessment date here is February 1, 2016. We're doing our best to come up with what it would have traded hands in an arm's-length transaction on that date. And so as of February 1, 2016, you only know what happened in the past, and you don't know what's going to happen in the future. But you might also have an idea about what's reasonably anticipated in the future. People make their 2016 budgets at the end of 2015. So it was reasonably anticipated that because of our high levels of vacancy, we would have to lower our rents in 2016. We were planning on that, and because our vacancy didn't magically go down, we had to try to lower our rents to get our vacancy to go down. It still hasn't worked, it's still at or higher than it was in February 2016. But it is appropriate to rely on things that could be reasonably anticipated as of 2016, as of February 1, 2016, and as of February 1, 2016, we knew that our rents were going to have to go down. Now, if you used just the rents that we were asking on February 1, 2016, which is higher than what we've got in our analysis, because like I said, we hit the midpoint between the high that we were asking and the low that we were asking later that year. But if you just used the higher rents, you would have to use a higher cap rate, because, and you would have to use a higher vacancy, because our actual vacancy at West Ridge is 45% at those higher rents. We chose a lower rent in order to try to obtain a lower vacancy and lower risk in our investment. So if you use the higher rent, and that's fine, and again, we can email you the Excel spreadsheet so you can play with the numbers yourself if you'd like, but if you use the higher rent, then vacancy is going to stay high. So instead of 20% vacancy, we're more at 30%, 45% vacancy. If you use the higher rent, it's a riskier investment because you're having more trouble renting units at that level. So your cap rate isn't 11%, it's 12 or 13 or 18, like we saw in the marketplace. And then finally, with respect to the fact that this is a mass appraisal process, we understand that no jurisdiction can be or should be expected to do an individual property valuation on each property, and that mass appraisal, most of the time, gets you to where you need to be for true and full value. But the reason we're here today is because the obligation of any taxing authority isn't to use the mass appraisal system. The obligation of the taxing authority is to come to true and full value. And if the mass appraisal system has failed in that respect with respect to an individual property, because as Mr. Hirschfeld said, you're going for the mean. So that means some things fall on one side, and some things fall on the other side, and so when there's not true and full value for people who are being over-assessed, we've got to take a critical look at the outcome of that mass appraisal system and not just say, "We relied on the mass appraisal system, so we're fine." But have we considered every factor that goes into true and full value like the statute says we have to? And so that's what we've tried to do in this case. Now that we're here, now that we filed an application for abatement, it's time for an individualized analysis of what our property would be worth in the market, and not the median analysis of what a property might be worth in the market. The fact that we're here, and the fact that North Dakota has the statutory process in place for us to be here, means that the state recognizes a need for taxpayers who are individually aggrieved by the natural variations in the mass appraisal process to come and seek an individualized determination. So I would encourage you to take a look at those full factors, the individualized factors that affect market value, as we've tried to do here, and tried to provide a detailed analysis to that respect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stafford's alluded to, I mean, that is their statutory right. I always appreciate when property owners come before us, and, you know, we work through this. He's alluded to U.S.PAP a couple times, thank goodness, or maybe we should be U.S.PAP compliant. The state of North Dakota does not require us to be U.S.PAP compliant. compliant. But I wanna paraphrase statute six point seven, and it's in regards to mass appraisal and specifically to the point that with statistical analysis, you know, showing all indicators being good data, there can still be outliers. Uh, whether this property's an outlier or not, I don't know. That allows for differences of, uh, management styles, you know, we heard all kinds of, uh, stories throughout the boom that, well, I didn't charge the most I could, you know, I had renters that'd been with me for twenty years, excuse me, that, you know, I didn't raise their rents on. So that's a management thing that affects income. And it's so that's, that standard six point seven that allows the mass appraisal system to value to the median. Cause a thirty-six unit apartment building, you know, all things being considered, should be worth the same one lot to the next to the next, cause it costs the same to get water and sewer to it. It costs the same for fire to, fight the fire there. I mean, that's the, the whole basis of having a fair and equitable valuation. And with that, you know, do you have any other questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Hirschfeld? Well, hearing no, there, that there are no questions or comments, um, we need to approach each one of these individually.
Uh, Mr. President, I would say if you have any, if you were gonna make the same motion for all the land, and then I would handle the apartments separately.
Okay.
But as long as you list or identify the parcels, you'd be fine doing it in those types of groupings.
Okay. So we will look at the land first. Um, they're asking for an abatement on multitude of properties here. And you said we, um, is, is the figure one, figure two, uh, charts that we have, Mr. Hirschfeld, are they accurate for all the properties?
Uh, that is correct, Mr. President. They, they show the current assessed value, the requested abatement value that's on the abatement application, and then the requested value from the material submitted to me last Tuesday.
Okay. I guess I would look for...
May I, I apologize. May I make one last interjection on the, uh, before the motion on the land values?
Sure.
Uh, I would note that, um, in prior meetings between, uh, Mr., between, uh, Mr. Hirschfeld and Representative Roors, uh, with respect to the, uh, the February 2017 assessment, that, uh, I think there was a recognition by the assessor that the land values were over-assessed, uh, by at least sixty-five percent and agreed to a reduction of sixty-five percent. Uh, we think that the value is actually worth less than just the sixty-five percent reduction, but, uh, we would request that at a minimum, that reduction be adopted for sixteen as it was in 2017 by the assessor. Thank you.
So you don't want what was requested on this chart? You want more?
I do, I, I, I want what was requested on that chart, uh, but the sixty-five percent reduction is more than what is a, uh, higher value than we request on that chart. But we would think that the sixty-five percent reduction is at a minimum, uh, appropriate given that it was accepted for the 2017 assessment. Thank you.
Thank you. On, I guess we'll tackle each one of these. Uh, on the land, using, uh, figures one listed, uh, improved vacant lots and using figure two unimproved vacant lots, I would look, um, for any comments, questions, or a motion, um, either to deny or adjust the request.
A lot of information to digest here.
Mm-hmm.
I think you, I remember right, on some of these parcels, I've already voted no. On these improved properties, I just, my personal opinion, there's nothing that I have out there that's worth eighteen dollars a square foot. That's my personal opinion.
You have, uh, adjusted opinion?
Is that your opinion as of today or as of two thousand?
Two thousand sixteen.
Cause remember, we're going back to two thousand sixteen. It's a, it's a puzzle because you are trying to look back in time and reassess. And what they're asking for is an abatement for two thousand sixteen. We've made adjustments going forward for two thousand seventeen to recalibrate this based on, on where markets are. Um, and so for me, the difficulty is going back in time to two thousand sixteen and dialing these back down, cause, you know, we're here to represent the taxpayers and there's a part of me that says, okay, then let's go back to two thousand thirteen and fourteen where we were under-assessed, citywide, and let's recoup the money that, that the taxpayers didn't have. And so a, at some point, you have to forego what you missed out on and you, you have to make right where, where you are. And, and we're doing that moving forward in two thousand seventeen. We went across the board and are making adjustments for, for apartments, for, for houses, for, for everyone. Um, and it's real easy to want to, you know, go back and make the adjustments when somebody felt that they were overcharged, but nobody wants to come before us and, and state the case that they were undercharged at the peak rent time in our community too. And, and so with the parameters that we have to work with, I think you have to take the good and you have to take the bad. And we have tried to iron all of that and smooth it out, um, moving forward. And I think that's a task that not only we, but Mr. Hirschfeld have been, um, trying to be aware of, um, and not only in apartments, that hotels, um, houses, lots. Um, it's not a perfect process, but I, I think that we've made the steps moving forward to, to at least adjust for that. But that, that's my personal opinion.
There's a lot of hypothetical...
There is.
...in this. And I, and I think too, if, if this land was, say it was twelve dollars a square foot back in 2015, would it still be in their possession?
Mm-hmm.
Or ten dollars? I mean, hypothetically.
Were these values come, did the appraisal, the outside appraiser come up with these values? Is that where we came from?
That is correct, uh, Commissioner Frederick, on the, the parcels in figure one, they were part of the, the, uh, commercial revaluation based upon sales that happened not only in Westridge but throughout the city. And some of my other comments, I've referenced the sales that have occurred since. You know, there are significantly fewer sales, there's no argument there. But in each case, those, each one of those properties have sold in excess of what the assessed value is. And so then the question is, why wouldn't these sell for more than their assessed value as well? And we did find that one sale in Minot that sold in excess of the nineteen dollars. Uh, whether it would do it here in Dickinson, I don't know. I share the same concerns you do. It's just a, a high dollar for land, even in a good time in my opinion, but the, the data is what the data is and that's what I use. Uh, you know, take this moment to remind the commission that on the properties in figure one, we chose to make no change for the 2017 values. And the properties in figure two, we did make the decrease of sixty-five percent to those for 2017.
I think figure one, this one, right, Joe? Is that the one you're referring to?
Uh, I believe we're talking about one that's in my material.
Oh, okay. Cause the, the Westridge second edition lots are those ones that the city or Mr. Hirschfield believed that the, the sewer and water and streets were in, and those weren't, and those were valued at that high twenty-four million dollars, um, for the two thousand sixteen. So we are abating that. Um, and that's where that seventy, sixty-five decrease, sixty-five percent decrease was noted for 2017, but going back to 2016.
And, and I would support that with the information that I have to date that we used for the change in seventeen. I'd have done the same thing in sixteen with that data. So I would support that sixty-five percent decrease for those properties that we have in that figure two that's before you there.
What, what does that mean? Do we, do we cut them a check back then or?
Well, they haven't paid yet.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, they would get a, a rebate for that or they could apply that forward.
Okay. If Mr. Hirschfeld is, is comfortable with the unimproved, the, the sixty-five percent, I, I would also. Um, on the improved though, I have a hard time...
Mm-hmm.
...thinking that the value in 2015, going to that February second of 2016, if they were at a lower value, if they would have sold, like I said, if they would not be in their possession now.
Right.
So...
Have we, have we done anything on those in seventeen, for seventeen yet?
Yes. And we're, our, uh, the improved or the unimproved, I'm sorry.
Yep, figure one.
Uh, we, we did not make a change to those. We left those values up the same. And they would be the same as what we have here currently.
Like I said, I would, I would look for a motion to either deny the abatement, and we'll just do figure one first, deny the abatement or adjust the abatement to a figure that is comfortable with commissioners or even adjust it to their requested abatement value.
Mr. Hirschfeld, your recommendation on figure one is to deny the abatement on that one?
That is correct.
And then yours on figure two is to do the sixty-five percent reduction?
That is also correct, Commissioner Altman, is to deny the, the abated value but to, you know, accept something different, which would be the sixty-five percent if you so choose. That would keep us, uh, in line and fair and equitable with other like properties and...
Okay.
Are those the values represented in column three then?
Yes, that's correct.
That would be the assessed value?
With sixty-five percent, yes.
If you look at column three as the sixty-five percent reduction.
Okay.
So let's start with figure one.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to deny the abatement on those represented in figure one.
And the improved vacant lots and Roors.
Yeah, second.
We have a motion to deny the abatement in figure one of the improved vacant lots. We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
No.
Chair votes aye. That abatement is denied. Now we'll move on to figure two. And the recommendation by staff is that we allow for the column three sixty-five percent reduction on the unimproved vacant lots. That is the staff's recommendation.
I would make a motion to approve that.
We have, we have a motion to approve a sixty-five percent reduction in the unimproved vacant lots and the Roors addition and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That abatement for the sixty-five percent reduction is approved. We'll move on to Westridge. My understanding, as I look at this, they have an assessed value of twenty-five million, six hundred and ninety-two thousand, am I correct, for 2016?
That is, yes, that is correct.
They were asked, they have requested an abatement to their actual value of eleven million, one hundred and thirty thousand.
Correct.
So what is the commission's?
And, and that is different what, than what their application for abatement is asking for.
What was their application amount?
Uh, nine million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand.
So by what they filed, we have to approve or deny that abatement?
That is correct.
Okay. So we have an abatement amount of request to be valued at nine point one six five million.
Correct.
Um, and again, I would, I would ask commissioners if they want to stick with the twenty-five, six ninety-two, adjust that or just deny the abatement straight out? And that, we, we are within our authority in doing that, right? We can adjust the twenty-five, six nine two if we, if we so desire.
That is, that is correct.
Okay. Do, do we need to deny the abatement straight out then? And come back with a separate motion if we wanted to do that, or we could just do this new value? If so, if the commission desires?
I believe Mr. Hirschfeld provided you with a, a sample motion in his initial comments where, um, the motion would be to change the two thousand sixteen value from that of the assessor's value of, and in this case it would be twenty-five million...
Okay.
...six hundred and ninety-two thousand to whatever value you'd adjust it to. And that would be your motion.
Okay. So what is the commission's desire?
Well, I would desire to deny the, um, requested abatement value of nine million. That is...
But would we rather make a, a, a different change motion to their twenty-five?
That's a hard one to shoot from the cuff and come up with a, a new value.
It's hard. I mean, we have to rely on the assessor at some point.
Exactly.
We've already done some reductions this year, last year, you know, specifically to apartments. And I think that if we have denied every other abatement, it's gonna be hard for us to...
Mm-hmm. So...
Give them one.
Okay. What I hear is that there's a possibility of a motion to deny the abatement.
I, I would make that motion.
So we have a motion to deny the abatement with a second. Any further discussion? We have a motion to deny the abatement on Westridge Apartments with a second. We'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The abatement is denied on Westridge. Moving to Winds, Prairie Winds one. Their assessed value is four point one six eight million. Actual value in this booklet is for one point six seven million. Um, what was the abatement filed?
The abatement for this property was filed at one million, seventy-five thousand dollars.
One million, seventy-five. Again, what is the commission's desire?
I'd make a motion to deny the abatement.
We have a motion to deny in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The abatement is denied on Prairie Winds one. Prairie Winds two, we have an assessed value of one point, I mean, four point one six eight million. Uh, our booklet is one point five six million. What was the abatement filed for?
The abatement was filed at nine hundred and ten thousand.
Nine hundred and ten thousand. So I would look for a motion to adjust or deny abatement.
I'd make a motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny abatement and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The abatement is denied. So to clarify, we have adjusted the unimproved to a sixty-five percent reduction. We have denied the abatement on the improved and on the three apartment complexes. Okay. Thank you, Roar. I never closed down the, uh, public issue or city, of city concern that are not on the agenda. And so we will open that back up. If there's anybody from the public, seeing no one from the public, I will close public issues and I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. A motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.